We brush with it here. Up this morning, five a.m. here. I mean, I mean, I came straight from work there. It is six o'clock. Not yet, not yet. I'm ready, you ready?
I am.
Good evening. This is the November sixth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Town of Nury Main Planning Board. A meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker and I am the chairperson for the board. This is a public proceeding and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that is being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session for Maine's Freedom of Access Act. You also have the right to review any of the material created or received by the board that relate to the board's deliberation unless the state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or would like to access any material. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded. If you would like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town administrator. It's also being livestreamed. I would also like to welcome Western Hills Access Television and its viewers to tonight's meeting. If you are attending this meeting in person and have not already done so, please sign in at this time. Everybody signed in, go. He is now.
Got it.
Okay. This is a working session of the planning board. Maine's Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or video recording of the meeting. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. However, as chairperson, I may allow exceptions when it is in the interest of the board. An example of an exception would be to allow in the butter to an application under consideration to address the board. According to the Nury's Planning Board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by thirty minutes increments if a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each thirty minute increment. If the meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussion will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following businesses. A pre-application meeting requested by Mainland Development. Mark Barnes, I assume that you're Mark there?
Hi. No, actually, I'm a stand-in, so my name's Rick Dutton with Mainland.
Oh, okay. Rick Dutton then, I assume you're a professional engineer?
I am, yeah.
Put the P E behind you, okay. Representing Four J Development LLC for six lots of division at tax map R thirteen dash thirteen D dash one. Item number two on the agenda is review of a conditional agreement between the Town and Pines Group LLC in lieu of a financial performance guarantee for the Pines at Sunday River Subdivision, application number twenty four dash two eight zero. Number three on the agenda is Sunday River Skiway, Merle Hill, Gerald number two, extension of site permit number twenty three dash two seven five, which happened to be approved on July fifth, twenty twenty three, and the findings of fact signed on July nineteenth, twenty twenty three. And if we have, which I don't think we do, findings, the last item on the agenda is findings of fact for Sunday River Jordan-based Eagle, application twenty four dash two eight four. Just a reminder to the public that the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the Town of Nury Unified Development Review Ordinance, commonly referred to as the U D R O, as well as state law. Prior to attending the above business, the board must first conduct some administrative procedures. First of all is attendance. For section two dot B of the Nury Planning Board Ordinance amended on June eighth, twenty twenty one, the board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for the meeting to proceed, I must first establish that a quorum is present. A quorum consists of two voting members. The members of the board are myself, Ted Baker, Bruce Pierre, vice chair, and Gooch Gautier, also known as John Gautier, secretary. We have two alternates, one of which is present tonight, and that is Meredith Eric. Rob Cates is absent. We have three voting members, so we have a quorum, but the minutes show reflect that we have a quorum. We have no absenteeism in the last minute meeting, so we have no need to go through that verification. All members tonight are eligible for voting. We don't have any old business to take care of. Okay, that takes care of voting eligibility. Let's move on to minutes of the prior.
Did you mention that Joel's not here?
Oh, I will mention that now. Let the record show that the code enforcement officer is not with us tonight. She is somewhere lost in Virginia on the trails someplace. Let's move on to minutes of the prior meeting. Does any member of the board have any edits or comments on the minutes of the last meeting held on October sixteen, twenty twenty four? John?
Nope. Nope, I like it.
I like it. Good. Meredith? May I entertain a motion to prove the minutes as drafted?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to.
I was just gonna ask about permission.
What?
Did you ask Bruce if he had anything?
Yes, he did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He was the first one.
Oh, okay.
Or maybe it was John, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of the board meeting Wednesday, October sixteen, twenty twenty four, Nury Planning Board. I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as drafted for our previous meeting on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four. All those in favor? One, two, three. Okey-dokey, that takes care of our administrative duties for the night. Let's move on to business items. First is the pre-application meeting requested by Mainland Development. Section nine of the U D R O allows for an applicant to request a pre-application meeting. You say it on. The submittal of review of the pre-application sketch plan shall not be considered the initiation of the review process for the purpose of bringing the plan under protection of Title I M R S A, section three oh two. Mr. Dutton, do you have Form ten point one filled out or not?
I think it's been submitted.
Okay, it was not distributed, I don't believe. All right, so we all have Form ten point one. The applicant is considering a proposed minor subdivision on Monkey Book Road consisting of six lots on twenty point five acres. And this is just after the town road ends and the private way begins.
The gravel pit.
The sand pit.
Sand pit.
Sand pit. Mr. Dutton, you have the floor to enlighten us.
Perfect, well, I appreciate you guys taking the time tonight. We are working, currently working with Four J Development on the plan that you just described. And it is the sand pit property just after the town road ends. What's being proposed is six lots, one of which is what we call a kingdom lot, and contains most of the really steep, steep ledge area. You guys are familiar with that property. You know, there's some flathead around where they've worked the gravel and then it's right up, right up steep. And we're here tonight just to get the board's feedback on what we're potentially proposing for an application, or for a subdivision setup here, and get the ball rolling, as we'll hopefully be continuing to work on getting a complete application in the next few weeks and submitting, God willing, and with your feedback shortly.
Do you have any questions on the application procedure?
I don't think so. It's been a while since I've done a U D R O application. And so we've been digging through, well, I mean, back in the old days, we kind of shaped it the way that we saw fit. And I know there's a very specific shape to that application now. So we're going through that and starting to pull together our application materials. But I think Joel has done a great job in letting us know. You know, we've had a few questions and she's walked us through it. So we're continuing to build the application as we speak, but we don't want to get too far in case you guys have some feedback for us.
Well, this is an informal, informal pre-application, therefore the board can't really take any, give you any feedback as to what it's looking for, not in the way of, yes, this is approved or no, this is not approved.
Yeah, we recognize that there's not, you know, any sort of real finding until application is made. But it is suggested that in the U D R O, this could be a first step, and I thought that'd be a good one just to give.
We appreciate that. John, you have any?
Well, I was just looking at it going, there aren't extremes on here?
There are, yeah, there are a couple of wetland areas in those streams.
I see a wetland area on lot one going to lot six. At least I think that's what that is.
That's a wetland area right there. And there's a small wetland area here on lot two as well. Lot sizes range from, oh, one acre on lot six, so the big one is sixteen acres. But in general, you know, in that one to, one to three acres range, we plan that all of them have minimum frontage at one hundred and fifty. They'll fit the seventy-five-foot radius circle. They're not shown on this plan yet, but we've been out and done preliminary test bits for suitable slip surface wastewater. So we'll have those on the plan when we submit. What else can I tell you about it?
So how steep are these lots?
Well, the buildable portion is basically the part out front. There are some really steep sections, you know, on the backs of lots. Certainly, this area in lot one, which we don't anticipate anyone building, as well as the backside of these lots here is, it's, you know, it's real steep.
And the soil is glacial tilt?
The soil is nice gravel. Yeah, nice sandy gravel, I mean.
On the roadside.
On the roadside, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I anticipate probably pretty near exposed ledge, and even if it's steep.
And it's all forest at this point?
Uh, no. It's open, I think, the part that's been sort of reworked and the gravel moved around and all that stuff is obviously open. But it's mostly, well, we show a tree line here. That may have been opened up more since the survey, but generally, this smaller up front by the road area is cleared. Everything else should be forested.
Pretty scrubbing in there.
We're anticipating each lot would obviously have access on the Monkey Book Road.
So you're anticipating having six driveways?
Yeah. And then for lot one, what we're currently planning is that there could be a nice build site in this flatter area behind lot six, and so it'd be an easement through lot six for a driveway to get back to lot one. Lot one would have its legal frontage over here as it's part of a large lot. But it seems to make sense that the access for it could be up through this lot.
So is there anything buildable on lot one where its frontage is?
Down by the road here, I think there is some buildable area down there if somebody wants to be really close to the road.
Or as is proposed now, that is not a building site?
We don't anticipate it that way. I'd like to see where, they may have found a, actually, I know they did find a suitable subject site somewhere in here. So it could be, it could be a buildable location there. And if that's the case, then I wouldn't anticipate the easement through lot six being utilized. But they basically have an option, in the way we're looking at it right now, they have an option for where to build, whether it be behind lot six or potentially close to the road.
And how much site distances are available?
Um, it's on the outside of the curve, so ought to be pretty good, though site distances is a good note, and I'm not sure that we have actual numbers yet.
Gooch, just remember, this is a pre-application, we're not going through the review process.
I welcome the question, though, I'm not offended, I think that's, that's good.
So the name of the developer is Four J?
Four J, yes.
Think of Tarjay. Well, I'm looking at this as forget development. And that's what I first looked at.
Well, what are we forgetting?
So it needs a little, that's a little on top of the T there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll work on the expanded keyboard.
Bit of a joke around our office as well, although I don't know.
I was corrected ahead of time, so I was prepped.
Yeah.
Bruce, any questions or?
No, I know the area, I'll see what happens.
Meredith? All right. Well, okay, Mr. Dutton, first of all, the burden's on you, the applicant, to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the Uniform Development Review Ordinance, as well as state law. And as you're probably well aware of, the application review procedure, at first, we have to go through some administrative stuff such as, does the planning board have jurisdiction? Does the applicant have standing? And do you have agency from the applicant? We're kind of, since this is a pre-application meeting, we're not being strict on that, but certainly, when you come before us with the application, we'll need that agency letter.
Yeah.
I think there was a recent sale on the adjacent lot by the applicant. Therefore, your subdivision needs to increase by one?
Uh, this one here.
Lot thirteen, thirteen thirteen dash D.
Thirteen thirteen D.
Conveyed on, was conveyed in twenty twenty one. So under Maine state law, that needs to be part of the subdivision. As you prepare your application, please have a copy of the criteria of approval, either out of the state law or out of the U D R O, and make sure that you provide sufficient materials that we can find findings of fact for each and every one of those, as well as make a conclusion of law. You also need to be familiar with section thirteen, performance standards of the U D R O. A couple of that I will point out to you. Some of them obviously won't apply, like you're not putting a cellphone, a cellphone tower up on the lot, so that's, that performance standard won't apply, but a lot of them do. Pay particular attention to thirteen dot H, Stormwater Management Plan. Out of curiosity, are we, have you, have you or has the owner been extracting from that pit?
I don't know. It's the short answer on that, somebody's been pulling her out in there, but.
Could I interject?
Sure.
To my knowledge, there was no extraction from that, it was used as lay down to stockpile material.
It's just a stockpile.
Yeah.
If there is extraction, you're, the applicant will have to probably backpedal and be in compliance with section thirteen I for burrow pits. Also, the board will be very interested in section thirteen Y, groundwater protection. Given the slope of the land, uphill of that, just off the cuff, one would assume that there's a lot of water that comes down there. Section thirteen A C, fire suppression and life safety will definitely apply. Please review and use section twenty-two waivers to your advantage. Any waiver that you request, one has to be within the guidelines set up by the U D R O, must be sufficiently justified to provide a good argument of why it should be granted. Section twenty-one of the U D R O is performance guarantees. Unfortunately, that cannot be waived for a subdivision, so you will have to address performance guarantees. Let's see, what was the other one? Oh. I also believe you need to get a D E P permit, do you not?
Uh.
It's greater than, it's more than five lots and it's greater than twenty acres.
In this case, no. So the, the, well, I don't know, the answer's no, I could explain it now if you wanted to, but I guess this is very informal. So Cyclocational Velvet Act would be fifteen lots and thirty acres or more.
Right, but there's, but there's also, unless it's, unless my copy of the statute is old, proceeding before that is five lots and twenty acres.
If they're, if they're not single-family residential. So the single-family residential takes you to that second standard of the statute.
Okay, because there's a semicolon in that statute which would separate the family residential from that first part.
I don't know it off the top of my head well enough to know where the semicolon is, but that's been a longstanding D E P interpretation for ever and ever amen. But I can, I can potentially come up with an E P or something like that.
You'll need to address that to correct this, and we'll probably, we'll probably have the county attorney also.
Yeah, it's fine. I'll get, maybe I'll get a letter from D E P just saying, hey, look, this is what we're doing.
It would, that would be, that would be ideal.
Yeah, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't qualify. And there's no other, there's no other infrastructure proposed where it's, you know, you don't need to have a road or, you know, that to generate the lot frontage. So it doesn't even require for stormwater P V R or any of that.
But the U D R O will require a stormwater management.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the board will also be interested on how that is managed after the subdivision is complete and the lots are sold.
Yep, maintenance.
Responsibility, et cetera. And last but not least, just to be aware that we will, we may use a consulting engineer to advise the board on your stormwater management plan, in which case then we'd be asking you for an escrow account. The application is in four parts. We ask that your enclosures through part one be behind part one, not behind part four. That you have an index of your enclosures that we can readily refer to them. Anything you can do to make it easier for the board to determine its findings of fact and make its conclusion of law will get you out the door that much quicker.
Understood.
Your boss will probably, probably tell you about that.
Yeah.
Or your earlier cohort that was here last time.
Yeah, no, he's still my boss, he's the owner and CEO, yeah.
Last chance for questions from anybody? Any questions from you?
All right, this is good information. I appreciate it, appreciate the time.
So I guess, so these are supposedly going to be just single-family homes?
Why?
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, and I guess might have been, probably, you know, that I'm a former fire department guy. Like, have they thought about sprinkling these things for?
Well, that's thirteen A C wise.
Hopefully they'll think about it.
They can either sprinkle or they can build a sixty thousand gallon system. I think they'll sprinkle.
I've heard, I've heard you implore for that before, and I figured that would be the case. Yeah, we'll be reviewing that with the applicant.
Cool. Is there a little sister no gravity feet?
Yeah. We could make it have a lot of pressure if we needed it to blow the fixtures off.
With Sunday River, they'll talk to you about pressure and hydrant systems. Any other questions, comments?
I think I'm good here. I think you guys are all set. Does it look like a generally reasonable subdivision, I mean, it's minor subdivision?
Yeah, it's a minor subdivision. As, as was pointed out to you, stormwater and groundwater is going to be high priorities on the board, especially down there. Given that there is no infrastructure, so the yellow one will be the the long-term maintenance of the stormwater plan needs to be addressed. And who's going to be responsible to do that?
Yeah, it makes sense.
And as for the, right away, you can haggle with Sunday River on that one, I guess. You know, that's all private word that you're on there. Town road stops before the that lot?
All right, I'll have to go, that's a good note, double check on it.
And in fact, I think there's an email stream from Joel, I think to you, or no, to you, your person you're standing in for, talked about the.
Yeah, so I'm having, basically by way of explanation, I'm having Michael Barnes work with me in prepping the application, and so I'm going to present and be part of it, and I'll probably be the engineer of record. He's also a P E, but we're working on it together.
There is, there was an email stream and that, the cutoff between the town road and the private road was specifically talked about.
Gotcha, thanks.
Last chance, Meredith? Nothing? Last chance, Meredith? Nothing? All right, Gooch. Thank you very much.
It's pretty uninvented, but I think right now he's on Monkey River Road subdivision.
We're about that when the application comes in.
Maybe an awful question.
Monkey River Road, okay.
Monkey River is Monkey Road.
Yeah, yeah.
The river's a process.
It might have been a river last December.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Keep working with mine out, we'll see.
All right. Anybody need to take a break?
Thanks, Rick. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the additional agreement with the Pines LLC. That will be present, uh, Joel's not here. There's nothing from the board to look at. The final, the smooth draft of that will be, has been signed by the Pines LLC and will be presented to the select board at the next Tuesday's meeting. And I anticipate that they'll be signing it at that point. So that was just an informative, informational story for us on that.
I got some new blacktop down there.
I saw that. I saw that.
Quite impressive.
Very impressive. I was kind of shocked. Okay, uh, I think it's the item number three. Which I believe is Sunday River, right? Who do we have? Who, oh, we got the, you got Peter tonight?
Yeah, Carson needed a break.
Babe, we, we're part easier than last time.
He's the original presenter for the month.
All right, Peter.
Um, so the Merrill Hill chairlift number two and trails applications approved in July of twenty twenty-three. We discussed with Joel, the, um, the permit sunsets after eighteen months, which would be January of twenty twenty-five. And so we're going to be in early, um, we're filing a request for an extension and just to make sure we had time to sort through any questions you guys had before that issue went online. Yes, so that's why we're here tonight. I have an application fee. Um, Joel advised us.
Hang on, hang on, sit down. Uh, where are we on the, on the project?
Um, so originally permitted was, uh, one chairlift and two additional ski trails, which both have bridges over Morgana Way. What has been completed so far, the chairlift and one of the two trails, um, and neither one of the bridges have been constructed yet.
Okay, so that won't be operational this ski season, I think.
Uh, no.
Uh, so if the board members would like to go to page fourteen of the U D R O. Nice, nice paragraph down.
Just page fourteen.
Yeah, page fourteen. Section three E. Actually, if you go to the top of page fifteen. Activities may be extended for up to one year by the planning board. So would the board agree with my interpretation that the applicant could request a one-year extension of the application as long as they do it thirty days before the expiration of the?
Sounds like it to me.
Yeah, I mean.
This is what you're here for, right?
Hmm, yeah.
Well, the timeline.
Given that, I don't hear any thing contrary from the board, all I, all the board requires from you, Peter, is a letter from Sunday River requesting an extension, a one-year extension.
Okay, so we, at the advice of Joel, have prepared the current application.
Yes.
Format. Um, and so you want to disregard that and have us come back in two weeks with something different?
Uh, yeah, I would, I don't think we need to, yeah, the, there's nothing new in that applicant, permit application. It's just a rehash of the old one, is it not?
Uh, that's true. It's just a.
And, and you're not adding anything different? You're not amending the application? It would make it be a lot easier for your time, the board's time, if we just get a letter from you saying, please give us an extension one year as per section three E.
Okay, so you don't, you don't, this is not acceptable in that.
Well, we'll, we'll take it. Uh, oh, you want that? Okay, well, okay.
My, my only, my only thought is, we're here tonight, um, if you want us to come back with a different piece of paper, that's totally fine.
No, Ted, you know, they just bring a letter and then there's no fees involved.
That's correct.
Okay.
So to save you some money.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'm happy to do.
And, and you don't need to, you don't need to be here to present it. You can be able to do this.
Okay, so the board would be comfortable with making a motion based on the letter without me being here?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, if you want to come.
Send your underling.
Man?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, we, it will be on the agenda. You, you, as the applicant, will have been informed that we will be discussing that letter. And it's your option whether or not you want to be present for that or not.
Okay. Um, if in that case, then I will.
And while, I'm sorry that you went through all the, or Carson went through all the making copies, um, for the, of the application.
Well, we're, we're learning the new world order of the planning board and since this is part of the learning. Um, but I guess if that's the conclusion, then.
Well, we'll, we're at your service. If you want us to go through the application, we can do that.
I'm following your guidance.
As I said, it'll save you some money.
No.
Yeah.
No, it would just be, it would just. It would just be added to the, to the file. There'd be no finance effect or anything like that. Just trying to make your life easier for you.
Absolutely.
Sorry that I couldn't have done it before.
Um, maybe next time we'll do a pre-application for the extension.
Or, or just touch base with us anyway, you know.
Um, yeah, thank you guys for the time and I will do just that. And, um, if you could, Becky, hit me on the agenda for the next one in two weeks and I'll probably just pop in and, uh, hear any questions that come up.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you. What is it, what is this, what is there? It's in January, right?
January fifth.
January fifth. Would you be upset if we don't have a meeting next week or, or in two weeks and have one in person, early December?
Yeah, as long as, as long as we're getting in before that thirty day deadline, I have no problem with coming in any month.
But you say all he really asked was something to eleven, right?
So the application was approved in January fifth and the findings of fact were signed on the nineteenth, or July nineteenth, so I'm not sure.
The meeting would be, um, December fourth.
This is July twenty-fourth. It was.
I think I got the dates crossed.
July twenty-fourth, it says.
And we January twenty, which dug out the wrong.
The eighteen month, yeah.
Um, so my question, I guess, to the board is the eighteen month clock start when the findings of fact are signed or when the application is approved?
When the application is approved.
When the application is.
Yeah, the finding of facts is just sort of like the mountain thing wrapping everything up?
Yeah, correct.
Perfect. I will, um, follow up with an email to Joel just confirming everything we talked about and she'll see.
Yeah, business. Right now, we don't have any, we don't have anything on any new business submitted as of, that I know of.
So you can cancel the meeting and then.
So we can cancel the meeting and then go on unless the board really wants to. But we have a, we're meeting next week at a special meeting with the Bethel planning board. So I don't know if anybody wants to do three meetings in one week, in one, in one month or not, so.
No, as long as we hit the deadline and.
The U D R O also says that the letter has to be submitted by that date.
Correct.
The board has to review it.
So you could just submit the letter to Joel?
Yeah, go to the town.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. See yous.
See you, Carson.
Goodbye.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right, uh, the fourth item on the agenda was the findings of fact. Uh, they have not yet been prepared, so that item will be, uh, put off to our next meeting.
Well, that's not time sensitive, then.
No, it's not time sensitive. I shouldn't wait until next springtime when the eagles already melt. Uh, so we'll go on to discussions or questions or comments or whatever. Meredith, anything you'd like to talk about?
I just had one question about, maybe I need to review what's on the website, but is the applicant, applicant given a description of what the pre-application meeting is?
Yes. There is a, uh, there is a pre-application form available on the website, which has a cover letter that explains basically vegetation, what's in the U D R O. And all that.
I was just curious because it seems like they have different expectations sometimes.
Yes, yes. Uh, I, I, as chair, am trying hard not to be holding their hand as to, this is what, if you do this, you're golden. I would much prefer that they come and ask questions and whatnot, or any comments that we pass or general comments.
Right.
And not specific, specific to the individual project, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that was my, my caution to, to Gooch was just to be careful. We're not getting into review situations and whatnot.
That letter only on the website or when they request a pre-application meeting, is it sent to them?
Uh.
I just, it doesn't seem like they have the information of what the meeting is all about sometimes.
I can, we can work with Joel with that one because it, she, she's the middle person.
Yeah, or at least direct them, make sure you read this before the meeting so they understand. I don't know, it just seems.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I, I was expecting to see it's performed ten point one, which is basically the pre-application. And they didn't, didn't do that, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just think maybe it, I'll read the cover letter. It's gonna be a little clearer somehow.
But, yeah, um.
I was just curious.
Yeah, please look it over if, if you have comments or suggestions, that would be, be an easy, an easy item to check.
I think that we brought up questions that he hadn't thought of, you know, like some of the, like, oh, that's the town road.
Which surprised me because we, again, we got to be cautious about what we talked about here, that that had been, that had already been brought to their attention. You know, I don't see, I don't see any problems with the questions we were asking. We just have to be mindful as to that we're not, we're not taking the applicant and giving them false ideas that, hey, if you do this, you're in and out of everything.
Yep.
All right, uh, anything else, Meredith? John, or Gooch, anything you?
No, um, um, this meeting with the town Bethel concerning block summit, um, they're concerned about it?
Uh, block summit is, block summit three point O. Lots, uh, the, the part of the project development that lies in Murray, which I guess is phase two of the approved application or the latest approved application. Transferred ownership last, a month ago or two. And.
Nickel Solo.
And the current owner is, uh, wants to proceed with phase two.
Okay, and, okay, we don't know if phase one's built out or not.
No, uh, well, there's a lot of building going up there or whether or not there's, you know, there's what, but because phase, phase one basically is in Bethel and phase two is basically in Murray. Back in twenty seventeen, if I remember correctly, uh, there was a, oh, let me back up even further. The, the states, state law states that if you are, if there is a project or a development that spans town wa, town lines, uh, both reviewing authorities, in this case, this planning board and the Bethel planning board, need to have joint meetings to review the, the, the application. Unless the two approving reviewing authorities agree to something else. So there's that big unless. And so back in twenty seventeen, after the application had already been approved back in twenty, two thousand and six, there was an agreement between Bethel and, um, Nury that joint meetings would not be necessary unless, and there was a certain set of conditions that, you know, if one of these things was happening, like a change in density or, uh, uh, change in common area that was being set aside, that would require a joint review. But if it was just a, if it was just a, uh, something that was phase one, Bethel could handle it. If it was something that was just entirely within phase, phase two and not in that list of requirements for a joint meeting, then Nury could handle it. What brought this all up is that, uh, back in twenty seventeen, there was a amendment to the app, to the approved application to, uh, join, to join two lots. In that, uh, because of, if the, in order to have one lot, it was going to require a substantial infrastructure in the form of a road to get access to it.
Yeah, I remember that one.
And, uh, so back, the previous owner decided that's not, wasn't financially feasible. So they joined that remote lot, made it part of another lot that had road frontage. The current owner has put in a, or is in the process of applying to have undo. And, and to recreate that remote lot, but only now driveway entrance would be off of Sunday River Road. And they went through the above notification. Unfortunately, they didn't read, they didn't read the portion that said, abiding municipalities need to be notified. Anyway, uh, the town responded saying, hey, you know, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Have you thought about this? That's what brought this all up. So all of a sudden, Bethel was kind of caught flat footed. And so we need to revisit this joint meeting agreement and, and talk about that. Uh, just, uh, the applicant is still waiting for D E P approval of the property transfer. And since there is a driveway, I would imagine that this is going to need a D E P review, so it's being slow. It'd kick me if I'm saying too much.
And out of curiosity, so, um, I know they, when this was first fuzzy and done and put this thing together with Bethel, this guy's father.
I think you, I think.
Rick?
I think your name's on it too.
I think your name's on it, too.
Yeah, he was on it.
No, his father.
His father, his father, right, right. And you were, you were on the, I think you were at least on the 2017 application. You, you were part of the board.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I believe that I was chief at the time, and they had covered it to sprinkle, because Fuzzy was all about sprinkling. And then they came, I guess when Nichols bought, they came in and they changed the covenant to just do fire ponds.
Right, and. Since we're getting into phase two, at that point, we need to stop discussion.
Okay.
Because that's going to come up. Because when, I, I'm assuming that the town, the CEO is going to say, hey, before you start phase two, you got to go through the, the infrastructure, the infrastructure, the performance guarantee and all that stuff. So that they will be coming back before the board for that. And I think, and so, and we'll stop at that. Anyway, that's, so that's, that's, this has been taking a long time. It's, that's why it's been on the agenda every single time for the last several times, and Joel's had very little to update. So this meeting on next Wednesday is simply a preliminary meeting to probably review the existing agreement and probably just put fresh signatures on it. And I will, I will get a copy of that out to everybody in an email, or Joel will get a copy out of that.
We still don't know what's happening, though.
We don't, we do not know where it's happening because of the mold remediation going on in the Bethel Town Office, the offices in the fire station. Board meetings have been farmed out to different locations and.
Well, because, would it have to, have to take place in Bethel or could?
No, no, and, and the offer was made through the code enforcement officer that they're welcome to use this facility or the Grange for the meeting. But because of Joel's absence, there hasn't been any follow-up on that yet, so.
TDD.
Probably determined. And I think, John, you said you could, Gooch, you said you'd be able to make that? And you're already committed, so we'll have a full board. Meredith is going to be there as well, so.
What time is it at?
Six o'clock is there, I mean, yeah, just the location. And Becky's got a kitchen pass for that.
You said to read something before that.
I'm sorry?
You gave us some reading homework before that.
Yeah, that was, it was just the, the section of the MSRA that talks about.
Joint meetings?
Joint, joint meetings. It's very short.
I'm, I'm sure that you can find that on main.gov, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you have the, if you have the MMA planning board handbook, they have the excerpt of the subdivision law in appendix some five, you'll find it.
I haven't got one of those. I don't know what happened to it.
But yeah, you can find it. If you go up to subdivision or section of that, if you can, if you need the citation, send me an email. I can do the citation. I just don't have it memorized, sorry.
Okay.
All right, keep tuned about, as I said, I don't think we have any new business for next week. And I don't see that we need to meet specifically, in two weeks, excuse me, in two weeks, that we need to meet specifically for the Sunday River extension. As long as they get that in, we can act on it independently. The city promises that. Any other comments, questions?
No, good to hear.
Okay, so next week, as soon as we find out, we'll get the location of that meeting. It's at six o'clock. Joint board, joint meeting with the, with the Bethel Planning Board. We probably already have to, hopefully, put us at the top of the. Of the agenda. Don't have to sit through the, the entire ordeal, although it might be interesting to see how another, how another board does business. I will entertain the motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion that we end the today's planning board meeting. This is November 6th.
That's it?
A little more?
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the next meeting of the planning board. And just for the record, to show that we have a special meeting on the 13th of November and a regular scheduled meeting on the 19th. Oh, which could be, could be canceled. Has not canceled yet. Will probably be canceled. That will make that the continuation. Are those in favor of adjourned?
One, I have, yeah, one.
Two, three. Meeting's adjourned. Brooks, thank you very much.